Councilman DeCecio is on the phone. Okay.
I am.
Thank you. We've got a call in need of order. First item on the agenda is a housekeeping for changing the start time of the August 29, 2018 executive session from 1:00 p.m. to noon.
Mayor, I request to change the start time of the August 29, 2018 executive session from 1:00 p.m. to noon, which is pretty much exactly what you just said.
Pretty much.
Mayor, if we could hold that for one moment.
I think we have to have a roll call first. I'm sorry.
Councilman DeCecio.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Guevara.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring.
Yeah.
Mayor Williams.
Here. Now, we have the change of the date or the time.
It was fun the first time, so all right, we'll do it again. I move that we request to change the start time of the August 29, 2018 executive session from 1:00 p.m. to noon.
Second. If we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we're going to have the presentations by the individuals who are seeking appointment as the interim councilperson. This is, each will be called, I have alphabetical order, and we will give each candidate five minutes to speak to us, and if the council has any questions at that time, you may ask your question, and then we will go to the next speaker until we get to the entire list. So, at that point, we will then take nominations by the council members and hopefully select someone today. If we do not, then we will be meeting again tomorrow. So, first speaker, Ms. Gilbert, Arvita.
Mayor Williams, City Council and City of Phoenix. I come here today seeking the District Eight appointment because I am able and ready to best serve District Eight. I have known District Eight as long as I've had memory because I was born here, I grew up here. My earliest memories include neighborhood cleanups with our scout troop, attending zoning meetings with my dad when I was just nine years old, and memories like removing the wooden boards off the historic Sacred Heart Church every single Christmas day, which brought to life a symbol of a community that was once thought destroyed. Coming from a community that was nearly politically and economically vaporized provides me a diverse perspective on many things, such as a solution to the consequences of bad policies. My solution does not see political parties, my solution does not care about what a person looks like or how much money they make. My solution is universal for all people in all zip codes, and the solution is this: Community first. You see, I put my community first every single day, it's why I am here. I have a longstanding commitment to serve my community because of the investment my community has made in me, and with the full understanding of my fiduciary responsibility, I am to take that investment, go off, and create even greater investment, greater opportunities for others. That's what ensures a sustainable and rich future. It is because of this incentive that I have been on the front lines of every sector of our economy, learning, growing, innovating, and taking a collaborative and coordinated approach to problems facing all communities. My diverse set of experiences provide the necessary qualifications for this appointment. My experiences include legislative oversight, constituent relations, community and economic development, and the integration of health and human services. These experiences that I have acquired in my short life allow me to be open-minded to all solutions, having access to all tools in the toolkit, and to provide the necessary communication to move our city forward. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the many movements this year that were started and led by young people, and here today are young people who have heard the call, who are ready and willing to serve. It is time for a fresh, new perspective. It is time for new people, new ideas, a new City of Phoenix. This is the value that I will bring to our city, a culture of community first, with a sincere commitment to nonpartisanship and cheerful service. It is time to let the next generation be represented on this governing body, and there is no young person more prepared and willing to lead and serve the City of Phoenix than myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next is Margarito Blancas. Are you here? George Burks Jr.
Good morning, Mayor Williams, Vice Mayor Waring, honorable council members. It is a pleasure to be up here. I have known some of you for decades, worked with some of you for decades, others I don't know at all, but I'm looking forward to that opportunity. It is an honor to stand before this podium once again. It's a little bit different for me because I'm normally here to support someone else's activities. It's unusual for me to talk about me, something I really don't like to do. Now, I am not a gambling man, but there's one thing that I would be willing to bet on, a thing that most of us, if not all of us, share, that is, we wake up in the morning hoping that tomorrow or today will be a better day than yesterday, and then work really hard to make that dream true. Some of us for our families, some of us for our congregations, some of us for our constituency. My father was like that, he was sent to Arizona to start a church, but because he saw the need for better days, he started something also called Head Start, and he marched with King at the same time. My mother, a hidden figure, biological scientist, figured out the first way to grow valley fever in the laboratory, hoping that she was a hidden figure, hoping that that would make someone's day better when they can cure that disease. Regrettably, they still haven't. I work much the same way. I believe that my job, in fact, this is what applied scientists do, we believe that our job is to make the world better for tomorrow and find ways to economically apply the things that we learn. So, with that thing, that in mind, we need to look at our district, District Eight, because there are so many things that will be facing it over the next seven months. Finding the homeless and the addicted and the formerly incarcerated, the comfort and assistance they need to begin a new future, getting a hospital in South Mountain that needs one, helping that young person I met on as they were delivering soda pop to my local grocery store, the business, because there are thousands of them like this person, the business that they want to start and the information so they can start it, keeping the water behind the dam so we don't get to that 1075 number. Oh, by the way, it's that 1078 this morning. All of these things are driving our community. We want our community to rise with the tide of prosperity, but we also want to make sure that everyone in that community knows how to swim so they can also take part. May the work continue to make our parks and recreation wonderful. I need this personally. My wife is, just recently survived cancer, and she is now up running South Mountain, and I have to keep up with her. May the airport help to incentivize new business from across the border. May we bring agriculture technology to this new area so more people can have jobs. From urban farms to sky trains, entertainment to art, and walkable streets, there are so many opportunities to build a greater inclusive prosperity. The elected councilperson, of which we have many great candidates, will have to hit the ground running, so the interim person cannot be a caretaker. He, in this case, he, must be a transformational leader and dynamic entrepreneur, one ready and well-skilled in how the city works to build that foundation for that new councilperson. I believe I am that person. So, I thank you, and I look forward to your decision. Are there any questions?
I have questions.
Absolutely.
And these are going to be the same questions to all candidates. I asked it at the last time. What is your position on removing the city manager from office?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Pastor, that is such a complex question that I regret that I am, or would rather not answer that at this time, because I would prefer to have a more in-depth understanding of that situation than I do.
Okay. My second question is, what is your position on South Central Light Rail Project as well as the future of high-capacity transit in our city?
I am a transit advocate. Back when I was an undergrad at ASU, a friend of mine, for some unknown reason, a couple of sophomores sat in the Memorial Union and designed a train system for Phoenix. Thank you for putting it almost exactly where we designed it.
Okay, and my third question, final question. Have you ever applied to be a precinct committeeman or woman?
A precinct committee person? No, I have not.
Thank you.
I've done a lot of other things, but not that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Isabel Chavez.
Mayor Williams, members of the council. My name is Isabel Chavez, and I'm seeking the interim appointment for council District Eight. I am a fourth-generation Arizonan and lifelong resident of District Eight. I was born at Phoenix Memorial Hospital at Seventh Avenue and Buckeye Roads and lived in the Golden Gate Barrio until it was razed for airport expansion. At that time, my family and I relocated to 19th Avenue and Baseline, and I continued to live in South Phoenix, Levine. I am the proud daughter of a migrant field worker and entrepreneur with a third-grade education, and a mother who graduated from the Phoenix Job Corps and pursued a career in technology, where she began at ITT Courier and ended at Boeing. I am the mother of two children and the guardian of my adult sister Veronica. My daughter, Claricia, is a junior at Caesar Chavez High School and a social advocate warrior, just like her mother. My son is a junior at ASU and pursuing his life, his career in becoming an appointed officer in our U.S. Army. I was a case manager for the Division of Child Support Enforcement for 15 years, where I did my part to assure that the children of Arizona, specifically South and Central Phoenix, received the support they deserve from both parents. I was part of many committees, special projects, that changed process and procedure to assure that they were accessible and understood by everyone that was in need, all while being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of Arizona. I am currently employed at Chicanos por la Causa de Colores, where I advocate for both documented and undocumented victims of domestic violence, although anyone that knows me knows that I advocate for everyone and anyone whenever they are in need. It's what I know, and it feeds my soul. My advocacy began at a young age alongside my mother, as she advocated for my developmentally disabled sister back in a time where there were few services available. Looking back, this is where I began to foster my need and desire to serve. In 2011, I began volunteering for my son's football team during his freshman year at Caesar Chavez High School. I went on to become team mom, and although my son graduated, I remained there for another year because there was no one available to take the spot, although I continued to do it quite honestly because I loved it. My, in, I'm sorry, I remain, I did this, this is where, for the first time, I witnessed the real barriers plaguing our community. During my time at Caesar Chavez, I was able to witness firsthand the socioeconomic issues the students and their families were facing. Although most kids came to school as if nothing was wrong, many were suffering their own burdens at home. Many were foster children or came from single-parent homes, some were being raised by grandparents who themselves were suffering from health and financial distress. On game night, I was able to recruit numerous volunteers to work with me. They would seek me out and would show up before and after school and even on the weekends, not because I asked them to, but in my opinion, because there weren't any programs outside of school that connected with them. As part of sitting on this council, it will be my goal to find innovative ways to engage and educate the residents of our district, so not only are they aware of the services available to them, but also have opportunity to take part in deciding what it is that they really want and need. The population in District Eight, specifically South Phoenix, Levine, and the East Lake neighborhoods, have changed and grown exponentially, but places for residents to congregate and participate in their community, like community centers and parks, have not. I believe that working with the communities and bringing new and innovative amenities to the district, as well as investing what's already available, is the first step in assuring our residents have access to the services and amenities they want and deserve. The diversity in our district is vast, and every resident should feel they have an opportunity to contribute, even if they don't possess a college degree. By promoting the trade and technology programs already available through the city's Community and Economic Development Department, we can produce a skilled workforce who is ready to take part in and also benefit from the progress and growth happening around them. Although our communities cannot grow and prosper if they are not safe and inclusive, we must take a holistic approach in the way police and first responders interact with our residents. As our community is unique, and so should the way in which we approach public safety.
Let me wrap up, please.
With responsible development, fiscal responsibility, and equitable community engagement, District Eight will continue to be the crown jewel of Phoenix, and it would be my honor to represent my community, ensure that they have a voice that represents them.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have the same questions. All right.
Would you like me to repeat them?
Please.
What is your position on removing the city manager from office? Sorry.
As far as that is concerned, I would need to be presented with details. I know what has already been put out and the information that's available through public opinion, although I'd like to make an informed decision based on all the facts.
Okay, thank you. What is your position on South Central Light Rail Project as well as the future of high-capacity transit in our city?
I believe that light rail is something that our community deserves. Again, I believe that with any growth going on in our district, all of the members should be able to have an, be included in the decisions that are being made for them.
Okay, and the final is, have you applied to be a precinct committeeman or woman?
I am a precinct committee person and actually sit on the board of my LD-27 district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, thank you. Next is Victor Contreras.
Good morning, Mayor Williams, council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to start off by saying, I think whatever happens today, I think we're going to be okay. Looking at the fellow applicants, I think we're going to actually do really well. My name is Victor Contreras, and I'm a proud resident of the City of Phoenix and a community member of District Eight. My story starts actually in El Paso, Texas, where my parents, down on their luck and with little opportunity before them, came to this town to partake with some religious services. They came to find Jesus, and my dad found a job that weekend. That following Monday, he started work. He bought his first pair of work boots at Kmart, and we never looked back. Two weeks later, my mom packed our belongings in the truck, and we've been Phoenicians ever since. My dad worked for 25 years in construction, and my mom was a school secretary before becoming a real estate agent. I had a wonderful life, I lived in Maryville. My neighbors were police officers and firefighters, EMTs, public servants, postal workers, mechanics, truckers. It was a wonderful time to grow up in. Soon, we moved to South Phoenix, where I attended South Mountain Community College, and then to ASU. I now have a family of my own. My wife, Vanessa, who is here with me, who's the kindest, most sincere, and down-to-earth friend and partner I could ever ask for. We have two beautiful boys, couldn't be here because they're in school, at St. Thomas the Apostle, and I'm expecting a third child, which I hope is a daughter, because I'm up to here with boys. I work at Chicanos por la Causa, where I'm the Director of Workforce Solutions. It is one of the best jobs one could ever ask, because I help other people find jobs, I find, I help other people find opportunity, I help other people take the next step. During the recession, my dad lost his job, and while we did our best, he was very sad and crestfallen. I saw my father, who worked very hard for 25 years, not have a reason to wake up every morning. But it was the City of Phoenix Workforce Program that helped change that. It helped save his house, it helped make sure that they had food on the table, and he went from being a construction worker to now he's a barber. It was also one of those programs that helped them pay for utilities assistance. I look back, and I think that was only 10 years ago, it wasn't even that long ago. That tells us something, that the decisions that are made in this council, they affect people, people who have no one else to turn to, sometimes people that are just too proud to ask for help. That's my motivation in life, and that is my why. When I wake up every morning, I'm looking to help people just like my mom and dad, just like our cousins, our friends, our neighbors. I'm helping them connect to employment, to jobs, I'm helping them take that step to go to college, to go to training. It drives me and my staff every day to do our best, to serve people in need, and we dream big, and we do big. In fact, the next few months, we'll be opening up a workforce center in Desert Sky Mall of over 8,000 square feet, all that in just a year and a half, because we saw a need, and we focused on that need. I'll bring that passion and zeal to innovation to the City of Phoenix City Council as your colleague and your partner. While I know the appointment is just a few months, I believe that my skills and work ethic, openness, and inclusivity to working with all people can help get things done. I'm also the opinion that the interim councilmember should not be a candidate for the position. This election promises to deliver a very contentious campaign. It would be best, in my opinion, if the next councilperson not be distracted by the politics, but focus on the issues at hand, and we all know what those issues are. This is also not a stepping stone to run for another office. If appointed, I can commit here and now to cheerfully donate the councilmember's salary to a charitable organization that serves District Eight residents. There's a lot of things that we need to take care of in District Eight: safe streets, clean streets, the relationship between our police and our community, the arts, our library, homelessness, which is becoming more and more of an issue. I want to work on these things, and I want to work with you on these things. We also need to really confront the two issues that are clouding our city, and leadership and management, and that's the light rail issue and the city manager issue. I want to, I applaud the mayor for taking time to listen to the residents of South Phoenix District Seven and Eight and delaying a final decision on light rail, I think that was the best thing to do. Thank you, Mayor, and to the councilmembers who voted in support of that. I also want to remind people that while the debate around light rail might seem to be around transportation, it's really about the future of South Central Avenue, what it will look like, what it will feel like, the houses, the businesses, the neighborhoods. This is more than just transportation, this is about the future of South Phoenix. In closing, I love this city. My wife and I have chosen to live in District Eight, and we are a common sight at the Crox Center, on the mountain, wherever we might be, we're often out with our two kids, trying not to go crazy in the house. It's our proximity to everything that this city can offer that makes us love District Eight. It's its long history, it's our friends and our bonds that we've had for many, many years that makes it a place that we love. It would be a great honor if I could serve as your colleague and in service of District Eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Okay, I have my three questions. What is your position on removing the city manager from office?
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor. With the facts available, I actually support him and committed to supporting the current city manager. Councilman DeCecio has raised numerous issues and questions about his management, which I think need to be addressed in an open and transparent fashion that is dispassionate and objective to the facts. We need to make, we need to move forward on that issue, so it's something that I'm willing to do.
What is your position on South Central Light Rail Project as well as the future of high-capacity transit in our city?
Sure. At the time when light rail was being discussed, I did not support it, not because of the idea, but because of the cost. However, I think that's something that many of us, we lost that debate multiple times at the city level, and the voters have spoken that this is something that they want. When you talk to young people, it's definitely something that they feel that they need, and without a doubt, light rail is very popular. I see it every day when I drive through downtown, so I support light rail, mass transit.
Okay, and my final question, have you applied to be a precinct committeeman or woman?
No, I tried, I did that in the past, I'm no longer a precinct committeeman or woman.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Wesley Harris. Abraham James.
Good morning, Mayor Williams, members of the city, of the Phoenix City Council. I've learned about service to others, which has become a part of my life while growing up along the coast of Georgia and the Gullaguiji community. After moving to Phoenix in October of 1986, I developed a great love of our city and its citizens. As a person with an architectural and real estate development background, the dynamic urban growth and downtown evolution of Phoenix has been amazing to me. I'm very much aware of the fact that no one can replace Councilwoman Gallego, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Williams, and Councilman Good, but it has been their leadership that has motivated me to pursue this position of public service within the City of Phoenix. Since buying my home in the Greater Green Gables neighborhood in 1988, I've been a resident of District Eight. Over time, I've moved into a leadership position within my neighborhood association, I've learned the importance of listening and addressing my neighbors' concerns during good and bad times. I've also learned that through research, there could be several solutions to any problem. And finally, I've learned that knowing people who might, that it is very important knowing people who might be able to solve my neighbors' problems, and they are very priceless. It is important to me that our citizens feel safe, to be informed, and to have the opportunity for prosperity in our city that values their humanity. In the past six years, I've served on a number of city boards and commissions and non-for-profit boards. The two city boards and commissions that I am most proud of are the Library Advisory Board and the Citizen Transit Commission. One can't forget the storm and water damage that caused the closure of the Burton Bar Central Library on Saturday, July 15, 2017. On Sunday morning, despite the horror of that event, I witnessed the very best of our city coming together to address a city disaster. Through tears, prayers, and determination, the Burton Bar Central Library reopened on Saturday, July 26, 2018, a Phoenix point of pride, better than it was before. Full disclosure, I am a writer and a supporter of public transportation in Phoenix. Our city voted in favor of Proposition 104, expanding bus and diner ride service and allowing light rail expansion as well as street construction. This is one of my proudest moments as the Chair of the Citizen Transit Commission. Over the years, I've developed a great appreciation for the work that each city department director and staff have undertaken in providing a positive and qualitative quality of life for our citizens within our city. We are fortunate to have city employees who care about the present and future of Phoenix, as I do. If chosen as a District Eight interim council appointment, I want to be an advocate for the citizens of District Eight. I want to be that bridge between the concerns of citizens for services provided by the City of Phoenix, and furthermore, I want to continue the legacy of And furthermore, I want to continue the legacy of public service that has been a great example for me by those who've held this office in the past. And like everything that I've done, I would be most honored to be, to do the best that I can for the citizens of District Eight and the City of Phoenix. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman?
Well, I think you answered it. What is your position on removing the city manager from office?
I have no desire to remove the city manager from office.
Thank you. What is your position on South Central, which I heard, South Central Light Rail as well as the future of high-capacity transit?
I support the future.
Have you, have you applied to be a precinct committee man or woman?
I am currently a precinct committee person and also a state committee person in Legislative District LD24.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council staff, I want to thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation. I love District Eight. There is still a lot of work to be done in District Eight. As you know, I served on the city council from 2002 to 2013 with overwhelming support of the constituents in my district. I actually, in the first race with no incumbent, there was nine people in the race. There were nine people in the race. We won 49.4% of those votes, almost getting to 50% with less than 50 votes short of doing that. And the remainder of the rest of our races, we've averaged over 70% of votes by the constituents in District Eight when we ran that race. And I think that's a tribute to the support of those constituents in District Eight and the services that I actually performed. You know that I was involved in the downtown, when downtown first came on and we redeveloped and revitalization of downtown, which actually started off with my colleague Peggy Neely and myself, when we were appointed by the mayor to lead the, trying to get the Cardinal Stadium to come downtown. We weren't able to get the Cardinals to come downtown, but it put us in a position to purchase that property that's north of Van Buren, which really led to ASU, U of A, the Medical School, TGen and those things being able to be built downtown because of what we had done to purchase that property. We worked with the neighbors over there in the Roosevelt District and they wanted housing. We worked to get affordable housing. And then they also wanted housing that was a work and live space. And you know, right there on Roosevelt and Seventh Street, you have living and workspace housing, where you have workspace downstairs and housing upstairs. We worked within the southern part of the district where when we first started was the hotspot according to the police department in the city. And as a result of that, we brought that down to where it was one of the lowest crime rates in the actual area. The citizens in the southern part of the city said they wanted to have restaurants. They wanted to have set-down places where they could actually eat. We actually built that along the baseline road corridor and was able to bring that in. And then in the northern part of the district, the citizens said that Indian School Road, they wanted to improve Indian School Road. We improved Indian School Road. We worked with Amalong and with, Amalong and the Indian School Business Association, which improved all of those businesses from 48th Street coming all the way down to the airport. Then at the airport, we wanted to improve our airport. We did improve our airport. We made arrangements so that we could open it up, doors for small business, local business, minority business to do business at the airport. If you go through the airport now, you see local businesses, local people there that had that opportunity to do that. A rental car facility that we built there, we built that rental car facility, opening up the doors for small businesses to come in, which they said contractors didn't have the opportunity to be able to come in and build in there because they couldn't do the bonding. So we had self-bonding. We did the same thing with the convention center, that we had it, first time in the history of the city, that in the convention center, you had Hunt, you had a Hispanic construction company and African-American company that actually built the convention center. Prior to joining the council, I served on the South Mountain Real Salado Planning Committee as well as other committees. As you know, I retired from the Phoenix Police Department. I was Officer for any program. And there I worked Project Aware, the Boys Club. I had a Boy Scout troop over at the Valley Christian Center. Now I serve on the Arizona Board of Executive Clemency. I have continued to work not only on the council, but prior to council and after the council, to continue to do things within District Eight because I still do love District Eight and there's still much work to be done in the actual district. You know, I coined that phrase when people didn't want to be involved in downtown or the southern part of the city, to bring about and talk about the positive things in there. I'm still receiving awards from being involved in the district. Just last year, I received an award from, when Phoenix OIC was celebrating their 50th year anniversary, helping others help themselves, I received the Jewel in the Crown Award. When they had the Pink Tide Council Coalition, I had the Community Hero Survival Award for working, because I am a prostate cancer survivor, to actually get that and work in the community and continue to do those things. At this year, at the Ebony House, I was a Master of Ceremony at the Onyx Extravaganza. Then coming up next month, September 29th, I'll be receiving the Thera Good Marshall Award of Merit. I'm still active and remain active in the community. I want to leave you with this saying from Martin Luther King, it says that "It's never too late to do the right thing." I encourage you or ask you to give me the support to continue the work that we started in District Eight. It's not too late to do the right thing. And I'm looking forward to having that opportunity with all of the things that we'll be able to do. I want to thank you for this time and opportunity to present before this board and I'm, I'm looking forward to just continue working in District Eight and working for the constituents. And I think we've had, by the numbers, not by my thinking, but by the numbers, overwhelming support in the district from the constituents within the district to support me in the things that we've done. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, Councilwoman?
I have those three questions.
I was trying to run off.
And I will quickly, quickly do it.
Same question to everybody.
Yes. What is your position on removing the city manager from office?
You know, I supported the city manager when I was in office and I plan to continue to support the city manager. I know the city manager is the only employee that the city council has and the city council in a joint session will be able to make a decision such as that.
What is your position on South Central Light Rail project as well as the future of high-capacity transit?
I support the light rail project, but I also support it being done in the right way. As you know, that MAG spent an enormous amount of money improving Broadway Road. They improved Broadway Road all the way to 51st Avenue. Now widening Broadway Road to be able to do that. As a result of that, the reason so, when the freeway comes around from Awatuki, they did that so that Broadway would be like an expressway, like Greenway, coming into the downtown area of the City of Phoenix. It would also serve as a reliever for traffic not going over there to the 10 on the already heavily trafficked 10. So I support light rail, but the only way that I would support light rail is that it has to be two lanes going down Central. Because of this reliever that we have going down there and the excess amount of traffic that would also be coming into the central area, that reducing anything down to one lane would only cause enormous amount of traffic backups in the city. And it would also be bad for the businesses along the South Central Corridor.
Okay. Have you applied to be a precinct committee man or woman?
I have been a precinct committee man, not a precinct committee woman.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Honorable Mayor Williams, fellow city council members, members of the community, good morning. My name is Michael J. Langley. I fell in love with Phoenix when I was playing in the Fiesta Bowl for the national championship 15 years ago. I loved it so much that I pursued and received my executive MBA a mile due east of these very chambers. It's truly a blessing to be before each one of you today. You see, growing up in one of the poorest counties in the nation, I almost didn't make it out alive. I nearly lost my life twice before graduating high school. A devastating rollover crash as a junior and a kidnapping and subsequent beating as a senior by two assailants. Now, you can imagine those near-death experiences could affect a young life, but two, fortunately, those indelible moments helped me adopt a renewed sense of purpose. It taught me never to take things for granted and to serve those who didn't have a voice as I was so close to losing my own. I'm convinced that the reset button was hit so that I could continue serving my community. All told, I am the embodiment of Phoenix, a survivor, equipped with the grit, determination and skills necessary to solve problems wherever they may arise. Combined with my work to effect change by hearing cases with the Central City Village Planning Committee, by addressing certain public safety concerns with the Phoenix Community Alliance and Arizona Town Hall, identifying opportunities with our youth with the ZIP Code Project and serving on several other boards and committees, that's exactly what I've done in my journey. As a Regional Director with the Borghin Project, I have spent a significant amount of time generating buy-in for federal legislation to curb severe poverty. I've worked in a bipartisan fashion with Senators McCain and Flake, Reps Gallego, Swickert, Sinema and their offices to pass economic development initiatives for our most vulnerable communities. And these efforts have delivered critical wins to date, like the AGOA and MCA Modernization Act. I have worked with policymakers at the state legislature, such as Reginald Bolden and former Senator Steve Pierce and several more to focus on supercharging our workforce through educational initiatives. And yes, I've worked with former Mayor Sandin and council members Gallegos and Valenzuela's offices to increase the city's exposure and to promote trade and investment into Phoenix to make it a more attractive place to live, work and play. Just yesterday, I met with the city's trade representatives to Mexico City and Hermosillo respectively, to strengthen our economic interests with our southern neighbors. As Hank Marshall puts it, "When you are proud of your community, you must embrace its story." Sage advice from one of the city's iconic ambassadors. I'm here to illustrate the next chapter. I'm a community champion who will get things done in a post-partisan manner. The days of our country's zero-sum politics provide no tangible benefit to the district or the city. As the late Kofi Annan once observed, "There's more that divides us," there's more that unites us, excuse me, than divides us. Acting on behalf of the best interests of Phoenicians will inform every decision that I make. That is my full-throated pledge to those in the chamber today. I have a clear vision to transform the district through innovative solutions, mechanisms such as blockchain, microfinance, autonomous vehicles, portable parking solutions from ASU as an example, which will impact the long-term stability of the city and continue to attract big-time events, accommodate affordable housing, elevate, alleviate poverty and create jobs, revamp recycling, promote responsible development and smart infrastructure. I've also spoken with out-of-state businesses about expanding their presence to the area, providing opportunity and for people in the district to grow and thrive. Now, we are at a defining moment in our city's history. So let me define the moment. Phoenix is at the cusp of unparalleled greatness. District Eight needs a leader who resides at the nexus between ingenuity, business acumen and robust policy expertise to breathe life into big ideas for today's issues, not those of yesteryear. The moral of the story, to be the best, sometimes you have to step outside of your comfort zone. I am Michael J. Langley. I appreciate the council for giving me this opportunity to share the value that I can add to those on the dais in Phoenix at large. I would appreciate your vote of confidence today. Together, we can elevate District Eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you. What is your position on removing the city manager from office?
Councilwoman Pastor, that's a great question. And if this were private industry, I wouldn't hesitate to, to make a change, but this is public service. And I do believe in due process as well as having fairness. And so I would love to have a conversation with the city manager as well as my fellow council members before making a decision to move forward with any changes.
What is your position on South Central Light Rail project as well as the future of high-capacity transit?
If we're serious about taking the next step in the city, I, I think we have to embrace light rail as well as other robust policy options out there. So I'm a big believer in multimodal transportation options.
Okay. Have you applied to be a precinct committee man or woman?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Williams and council, I want to thank you for the opportunity for coming before you today. I think we're at an interesting time in District Eight where we stand with a lot of choices about what direction our leadership is going to take, young and old. I mean, I was in a, we're all in the hot seat, but sitting between Lawrence and Mike is a really hot seat. And, and I think that our decision as a community has to be made in March with a, with a fair election and giving the people the chance to vote. And in the meantime, we have to be, as I said in my letter to you all, the best, I hope to be, with your support, the best active caretaker that our district can have until such time as the people are able to make a decision. You know, we're, all of us here, I think, if we're honest politicians and make political decisions and, and have political interests. And I think it's patently unfair to the voters of our district to give any particular candidate that is seeking office in March a heads-up. Seven months or so is a long time and incumbency is a powerful tool with respect to reelection efforts. And so I think that's something to consider. Very early on in this process, I was proud to get the endorsement of the, I think, most iconic member that's ever served on this body, Calvin C. Good. And it was on condition that I not seek the office in March. It was on condition that I work as a caretaker for this position and that I set an agenda that's realistic and not so far-reaching that, that it doesn't have an impact on the district. And the fact of the matter is, in seven months or so, you can lay the groundwork for movements towards more robust options with respect to affordable housing. You can lay the groundwork for additional dialogues with our police department, for the purchasing of more body cameras, for the return to two-person patrols. In seven months, you can lay the groundwork for major transit options, the Broadway, Expressway and other things that people have talked about. You can do a lot to pour into the foundation, but in, in seven months, the reality is, you should really focus on filling potholes, fixing busted sidewalks, shading bus stops, cleaning up blight, making sure trash service is working right, answering the phone, responding to constituents, getting them involved in the, in the process. Right now, we're facing tough, tough times in District Eight. The, the intensity that surrounds the conversation over the light rail is measurable, it's tangible. We need someone that can have a sensible and moderate dialogue around that situation and broker a compromise between the city and the community and Valley Metro. It's very critical that we do that and the time is running out for us to still qualify for our federal dollars to make that project work, if it's going to be that way. And if it isn't and the community is not able to build consensus, we need to still be able to have a conversation about how we make this grid system work with buses and with respect to wider transit options. I've been of service to this city for a long time. I've served on several advisory boards. The earliest one I did was Youth and Education Commission when Debbie Dillon was here. I love Debbie. And, and I've, I've always been a native son, very much in love with this city. And many of you know, my grandmother, Opal Ellis, was a major civil rights figure in this city. I grew up in a house where the city manager came over for breakfast and the mayor came over for dinner. So politics weren't strange to the house. But I, I do feel I'm best positioned to step in as a caretaker and as a non-competitor in March and as a non-aparitan, to be able to push forward on everyday issues that people in my district are facing and make sure that they receive quality service and have, you know, a positive relationship with whoever is in that seat. You have to be a caretaker, but you don't want to be a seat warmer, you've got to be active. And there are some reasonable things we can do. I also, Victor stole a little bit of my thunder, but I've talked to my employers, the radio station that employs me and other folks, and I too have decided to accept the position if offered without pay. And I do want to talk with the city manager about whether or not the salary could be used or contributed to the hiring of a or contributed to the hiring of additional police officers in our district. I also not enroll in the city's healthcare plan. I have my own. And my last point, the operating budget or what's left of it for District Eight, I would also like to see divided into minimum wage support jobs so I can put people from the district to work right away. I've got an army of lawyers and zoning people and community people, nonprofit people willing to step in, full-time volunteers, and make this office really work for the seven months that we have. That's really what it is, to make it a little bit better until the people have their election. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
What is your position on removing the city manager from office?
Ed, you're fired. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. You only get one chance to do that, so I took it. But let me tell you my real answer. And I talked with you yesterday about it. I talked with you yesterday. And the fact of the matter is this, if you look at every email that I've sent to Ed Zirker, our city manager, they all start with Brother Ed. And Laura, I said it and I meant it yesterday. I'm 30 years old from the south side of Phoenix. I'm a young man of color. My mother's Mexican, my father's black. Nowhere in America does anyone my age, younger or slightly older, or out of power or in power, very few of our major cities can you reach the leadership of the municipality and actually get something done. You know, and I think that's a testament to the kind of atmosphere that exists in the city manager's office. So I'm supportive, and I think that that's important. I want Ed to know that. He just sent me an email not too long ago about gearing up for the census. It's important work, too. We need those federal dollars. So there's a cooperative spirit that exists there.
What is your position on South Central Light Rail Project as well as the future of high-capacity transit in our city?
I think my district, in large part, the business owners particularly on Central and residents that live in the area have been insulted by the process because they feel like they've been left out of the conversation. I think we need to really quickly have conversations, and Councilman Noakowski and others have put out dates about public conversations that we'll be having to talk about it. Again, yesterday, we talked about the light rail situation. It's more than just the four lanes. It's the two giant roundabouts. It's the commercial traffic on the street. There's a lot that goes into it. I think Valley Metro can sometimes be a bully at worst, and at best, I think sometimes they're just guilty of ignoring what our community has to say. So we really need to reengage and have a stronger conversation about this. But the voters decided that that's what they wanted, and short of any sort of ballot initiative or anything to stop it, I think we have to figure out how to make it work and make it work while we can still get federal dollars.
Thank you. And have you applied to be a precinct committee man or woman?
Never a woman, like Michael. But I am guilty of being an appointed precinct committee person, not currently, but I think way back, like 2007 or '08.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, I have just one quick question.
Sorry.
No problem. You said that you would be a caretaker, but in our records, it shows that you filed to run for the special election.
I did. I had some concerns, quite frankly, that a member of the council or others felt that it was appropriate to maybe make another internal appointment, a staff appointment to this position, and I strongly disagree with it. I think we need organic and honest and native leadership from this district, and so I wanted to make sure that I had every option prepared. But I have no problem before taking an oath of office of stopping by the clerk's office and canceling out the declaration of candidacy.
Thank you. Michael McQuade?
Mayor, council members, and staff of the city. My name is Mike McQuade. I've resided in Phoenix for about 55 years. I was asked by several businesspeople if I would consider seeking this appointment, and at the time, I was advised you did not have to be a resident of District Eight. I live about three blocks outside of District Eight and District Six. So I'm told by the city clerk's office that I cannot be appointed, so this would be rather brief, which sure makes a lot of people happy. But on a serious note, if you read my letter in my bio, I've spent the better part of my adult life volunteering and advocating for the poor, the working poor, those living in poverty, and the homeless, in particular District Eight and District Seven. I plan to continue to do that. I thank the city of Phoenix for what you've done in the past. I think we can do more to give those individuals a voice. I think everybody in our fine city deserves a voice, so I will continue to do that. And given the quality of the applicants, whoever you do appoint, I would pledge to work with that individual and work with whoever does win the election following that to help that population in particular, but particularly help all of the citizens of District Eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is...
Mayor?
Oh. Councilman DeSisio?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment about Mike McQuade. He's an amazing individual. In no way did he even express half of the stuff or even a tenth of the stuff that he does for our city, especially when it comes to homelessness. This individual has no, you know, he doesn't have any reason financially or any other way to do that other than because he is just a kind soul. This man has done so much for our homeless population. He's a leader there. He's an individual who has given everything to help people in need, and I just think that just needs to go acknowledged. I don't think people realize how much this man has done for our city, and I, for one, want to thank him for everything he's done because it's been amazing, truly amazing, the work for the Center Arizona Shelter Services, the work he's done for raising tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars every single year just to help the homeless. He has an event once a year, and he raises a significant amount of money from there, just all directed toward helping people in need. And I just think we should acknowledge that, the work that he's done and what he has done for our city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. You are correct in your statements. He has done a lot for our community, and we do thank you very much. Next on the list is Velasia Mendoza Belacita.
Good morning, Mayor Williams and members of the city council. Many of you know me for the work I've done downtown, South Phoenix, and Levine, but I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you more about myself and why I'm seeking the interim appointment for the district I call home. My family immigrated to our city when I was seven years old. We were asylum refugees fleeing the Civil War in El Salvador. My early childhood was spent in fear, sleeping on the floor instead of beds to avoid crossfires and witnessing the daily death of massacre of war. Our lives were saved when we moved to Phoenix, but it was not without hardship. We faced language barriers, financial hardships, and the difficulty of assimilating to a new country. Why does this matter? Because I will approach every issue with openness, inclusiveness, and compassion. It doesn't matter your political affiliations, your skin color, sexual orientation, religion, or way of life. Your voice matters, and I want to be your advocate. District Eight is diverse with pockets of unique challenges and opportunities. And whether you're a constituent facing a hardship or a small business reaching out for an opportunity, I will work with you to build the community we deserve. And our district is full of those opportunities. I will work hard to continue the development and innovation going on in the warehouse district. It's time we truly connect the warehouse district to our thriving downtown and support new businesses and job creation happening there. District Eight is also the homeless sky harbor with an annual economic impact of more than $38 billion to our city. I have and will continue to work with the airport to make sure that Phoenix continues to attract visitors, tourists, and transplants from all around the world. Our airport is the very first impression most people get of Phoenix, and I take pride in the work being done by our aviation department. Transportation access for our residents is another critical issue. The South Central Light Rail will bring... transform South Phoenix to a destination point, increase economic development, revitalize South Phoenix neighborhoods, and bring opportunities to South Phoenix that have been left neglected for years. I will work with city manager Ed Zirker and all of you to find solutions to repairing our streets, improving our sidewalks, promoting walkability and ADA access. Neighborhood Services does a great job working with our neighborhoods to reduce blight and increase beautification projects, and I will work with them to help increase our resources, especially in our more established neighborhoods where infrastructure is a critical issue. Next, I want to talk about the city's number-one priority, public safety. I look forward to supporting our law enforcement officers to get additional resources they need for additional training, to improve response times and increase outreach and patrols in our neighborhoods. I will work with the community leaders in our police department to connect in more meaningful ways to address the diverse needs of our district, which range from code enforcement all the way to gang violence. By using all of our resources available to us, we can not only respond to crime, we can start preventing it. By working with our established neighborhoods, we can upgrade the crumbling roads and build our much-needed sidewalks. By supporting innovation and startups, we can add much-needed revenue and jobs to our district. And by supporting the South Central Light Rail, we can offer our residents and visitors a new mode of transportation, inspiring investment, development, and ease of access. This city gave me the opportunity to be the first one in my family to go to college, to live the American dream and give back to my community. My family is here, as long with my daughters Alexa and Isabella. They represent the future of our city, and I encourage them every day to stand up for what they believe with their own independent voice, and I will make them proud by doing the same if I have the honor of serving on council. The questions?
Question number one, what is your position on removing the city manager from office?
I worked with their city manager for the past 11 years. I respect him, and I support him, and I look forward to working with him.
Okay. What is your position on South Central Light Rail Project as well as the future of high-capacity transit in our city?
I do support South Central Light Rail as well as high-capacity transit. I believe that it gives visitors and our community a new mode of transportation, and it impurs investment in our community.
Okay. My third question, have you applied to be a precinct committee, a man or a woman?
Yes, I was asked to apply, but I declined to pursue because I had to change a party, and I wanted to stay independent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Loris Robinson?
Well, good morning, and thank you for hearing from all of us, and thank you for those of you who have joined us on a decision that I think puts us on one of two different trails in this city. But my trail to this city began long ago. It began in actually my mom's small business in the district. She opened up a daycare center in Phoenix, probably something she couldn't do in most places in this nation as a woman, as someone who came from working-class means. And it was there that I decided to make it known that I would be coming into Phoenix as a resident. Her water broke 30, almost 40 years ago, really, and it was there in her small business that I was raised. It was that small business that my dad came into. Currently at the time, he was the head of the Black Chamber of Commerce. Came in every day to check on my mom, but she didn't need to be checked upon because she knew that if she could stand on her own two feet with the help of her government that she paid taxes to, she could make her small business succeed. It was a lesson of standing on your own two feet that my mom taught me. It was a lesson I would need for so many years because as the black kid who was too light for some and too dark for others, who would later come out as a proud LGBT citizen, who would be someone who wanted to succeed in the city that he came into those years before, I recognized that all I had was those two feet to stand on. But I had the city as well. I had a park system, a library system. I had those around me who I joined with as friends, as colleagues, as neighbors, not because of any one of those identities, but because we were, in effect, at the same table, seeking the same opportunities to succeed. It's what draws me to your table today. It's what draws me to ask for the honor to represent everyone who's sitting out before us right now. It's not because of my identity, although I'm proud of every identity that I have. It's not because I bring forward the voices that have not been represented or that I fight for on a daily basis as an elected and non-paid school board member for the Roosevelt District. It's because of those voices that I think need to be at the table. You see, people talked about our community being poor. People talked about all of the needs and the deficits. I want to talk to you about those resources. Michelle Campesano is a teacher of six years in the Roosevelt District. This year, she rises on the ballot to ask for the support of our city to be a school board member. Single mother, special-needs kid, white woman, she calls herself, who was raised in the hood of South Phoenix, who's putting all of that aside to fight for the one thing that matters, and it's our kids in South Phoenix. It's my friend Jason who lives on the northern part of our district, in the block here in Garfield that probably one or two years ago, we wouldn't have recognized, that now has many restaurants and shops, but one or two years ago only had the house that he now currently is renovating with the help of the city that his dad had all but torn apart as a former drug addict. Now that house is renovated, that roof is strong over his head, and Jason lives in a block that represents the future of our city. It's the fact that my mom's dreams or Jason's of being a homeowner or mine is bringing those voices to the table can only happen in a place like ours. That's why so many of us came to Phoenix. It's why when we parse out who should be here, what identity, whose seat this is, should they run to keep it or not, doesn't matter. What matters is that all of these people who come together under the one banner as Phoenicians get the best possible leader to move forward. I've worked on the 11th floor trying to serve the needs of our homeless, our veterans, our women and small-business owners. I think back to my grandmother, who was the first African-American female judge, Ms. Judge Jeanne Williams, and how she would be proud of a Mayor Williams and a Chief of Police Williams, but how she would want to make sure that we save that seat for the next Williams, the next Robinson, the next person that can move together as a city to succeed. It's about roads, it's about water, it's about infrastructure. It's about the things that we don't see underneath this city hall chamber that serve the platform and the foundation for us to continue to rise forward together. And the fact is, as the drama of all of these decisions subside, our residents deserve the best possible person from day one, who will walk up and take the oath in our new city hall building that wasn't there just a few days before. My grandma used to walk me by the Orpheum when homeless had to reside in it. She walked me by Hanny's, which is a restaurant today that one day before I would not have been able to shop in as a person of color. But when walking by those relics and memorials, we have to think what we're walking toward together. And we didn't march up Central Avenue for a King holiday, so many of us in here, to not demand that the resources flow back down Central Avenue into our district tomorrow. And that has no color on those opportunities. It has no identity. That seat doesn't belong to anyone, but the person who occupies it must fight for everyone. They must fight in the most bland sense. They must fight for the resources and opportunities that you'll never see, but that grant us the opportunity that my mom gave us, that my grandmother had, and that I'm asking to give me today so I can represent all of those opportunities moving forward.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
What is your position on removing the city manager from office?
You know, I, having sat on a elected body that often has a lot of parlour intrigue, know that the real decisions about what information to make that decision upon are being shared behind closed doors. I look forward, after taking that oath, to having the conversation with as many folks to not violate open meeting law as possible so I can make the informed decision that best represents District Eight. Right now, I know as much as the rest of us out here do, and I don't think that's enough to make that decision.
Okay. What is your position on South Central Light Rail Project as well as the future of high-capacity transit?
Transit connects people to opportunities. We fought for those opportunities on the south side of this district, and so I 100% support the will of the voters. But I will say, the potholes and roads that will continue to let the rest of us drive upon them are also needing to be filled. So it's about a compromise. We need to make sure that roads and other modes of transportation are taken care of in the district and in every district in the city, while concurrently, we build the routes for tomorrow and for everyone else to have those options as well.
And then the final, have you applied to be a precinct committee man or committee man?
Long ago. Precinct committee people, for those of you who don't know, are elected positions within the party apparatus. I started out thinking that was the way. I've really moved forward and will probably never run for an office that has a D R I at the end of it because I think, at the end of the day, if we don't start in neighborhoods beyond political party, then we have nothing. So it's not even on the horizon. It's not something I am a PC today. I want to represent people beyond their parties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Stevenson? Cameron Stevenson?
Good morning, Mayor Williams, council members. I want to thank you for taking the time to look over my application. There are many qualified applicants for the position on the council today, but I believe it's my previous experience and qualifications and preparation for this role that leave me uniquely qualified to serve on the council with you. Over the past year, I have made it a point to either attend or watch online every formal meeting, community forum, and subcommittee meeting that has been made publicly available. Watching the council discuss and make decisions over everything from liquor licenses to the Light Rail extension and to see how those conversations have evolved have allowed me to, will allow me to hit the ground running as I work side by side with the rest of the council and with the members of the community in making decisions that will benefit not just District Eight, but the city of Phoenix as a whole. I'm very grateful for the improvements that have been made already into our neighborhoods. The beautification of the Grand Canal and the revitalization of Van Buren are going to do wonders for the perception of our city. If Sky Harbor Airport is the face of the city when people come visit it, the roads that lead to our downtown area are the kicking of the tires, so to speak. However, with those benefits and investments into our community, there needs to be other adjustments to make sure our community members feel that they are being invested in as well. It is in this area that I am confident that I will be able to make a significant difference. The growing number of citizens petitions, protests, and public pushback with city decisions are signs that the community wants to be more involved with decision-making, but doesn't know how to do it. And so they are using the tools available, the tools that they know, to attempt to reach out to their elected officials. As a city, we have an extensive system of support and ways for the community to get involved, but oftentimes it's hidden behind antiquated procedures and ineffective outreach efforts. To echo what Councilman Warren has said in the past, when our outreach amounts to little more than door hangers regarding important city manners, we're competing with pizza coupons and windshield replacements. It's time for us to reach the people where they are, to empower them with the tools that are available, and to work with our community to build up our city. My work in community outreach is specifically tailored toward modernizing the approach that both nonprofits and private companies have used to reach out to the community. I'm very appreciative of Councilwoman Guevara's immediate decision to open her doors to her district with regular open office hours. As someone who's worked in outreach for more than a decade, providing avenues such as that to make our leaders more accessible to the community go a long way in building bridges between leaders and those who have chosen them to lead. I believe there are simple outreach solutions available that will not only engage our communities, but will also save our city a lot of money. There's also a great deal of opportunity to cultivate the economic development in District Eight. The current cost to rent business space, coupled with the types of buildings such as the warehouse district we have, have a particular appeal with those in the tech sector. We've seen that as technology companies have decided to move into Phoenix. With the growing public transit that we will be bringing into our district, I feel now is the best opportunity to invite further companies in the technological sector, from Silicon Valley and elsewhere, to Phoenix to build our community here. There are also a number of nonprofits that have opened up, as well as the city's Code PHX program, which bring opportunities to teach our community members to learn how to do things such as code. Those two opportunities provide us a pathway to high-skilled employment for members of the community who will stay in the community and help to build up our district. District Eight is also home to a large number of residents who are living without shelter. As someone who's been in that situation, I understand the impact that that has on an individual, both mentally and physically. Phoenix Cares is a good start to assisting our community members who are currently homeless, but those efforts need to be scaled to meet demand. I also feel that there are ways that we can make our unsheltered community members feel more included, and there are things we can do to restore their humanity, which is the first step into bringing them back into our community in an engaged way. A little bit about myself, I'm a single father of two young children, lifelong resident of Arizona, who has worked in the district for over a decade. District Eight has where I've decided to plant my family's roots, and I look forward to working with the community to grow those roots, both with my family and with the city. The end.
Thank you. Council?
Oh, my same questions. What is your position on removing the city manager from office?
Yeah, I would approach that in any way that I have approached any employee I've been responsible for. If the city manager is doing their job, I think that they can stay. If the job requirement has not been met, I think it would be important to replace them. I also think it would be important to make sure that our city offers competitive compensation packages for city employees, so that we're inviting the best and the brightest to take on that role.
What is your position on the South Central Light Rail project as well as future high-capacity transit in our city?
I 100% support the expansion of the Light Rail and expansion of public transit. I also feel that attempting to take away the people's voices, as it's something they have voted on in the past, is contrary to the democratic process.
Have you applied to be a precinct committeeman?
I have not. I've been a registered independent for most of my voting career.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Warren Stewart?
Greetings, Mayor Thelda Williams and the council, and to all the community members here that matter most in this decision. We live in the Valley of the Sun with beautiful mountains surrounding us, but there should be no mountains between the council and community. The mountains of political parties and poor infrastructure and poverty from the lack of jobs, and the mountains of promised economic potential where resources most often don't reach District Eight, leaving our community discouraged. The problem is, we're fighting over who we want versus what and who we need. Our council's major focus is on the federal money of the Light Rail and placing someone in that seat who will vote proactively. But who will build relational bridges in the community once the material construction for the Light Rail is complete? As an independent candidate, I believe we need the federal dollars of the Light Rail to rebuild our infrastructure and create commerce communities that benefit families and businesses while attracting new streams of revenue to our city. But we need to beautify District Eight and not gentrify it. We need jobs in our district. We do need better streets, and we need safer communities. We need a proactive voice of reason with a consistent track record of respected relationships in the community during tense times, who bring solutions for all of us to collaborate and thrive together. And through the Faith and Justice Project, I have worked with the Phoenix PD for many years to bring balance in our community, rebuilding trusted relationships with law enforcement, with proven results of hotspot crime areas decreasing and creating safer communities. So what is the solution? What does our community really need, not what we want for a political agenda? We need a leader that has authentically served the community as a public servant before holding a public office. We need someone who can move mountains and build bridges between the Phoenix City Council and community, who will bring political balance while equipping the community with resources, helping the whole city thrive. And as the new freeway is being constructed on the precious native land, we must forge new trusted pathways with the right council representation whom the community can respect and rely on. So what do we need? We don't need a placeholder. We need a public servant. A public servant who holds a passion of these truths to be self-evident that all people are created equal. We need a council member who restores the dignity of this public office in the city of Phoenix. We need a council member that people can believe in again and be proud of where they live, work, and play in District Eight. We need the Phoenix City Council to reflect the demographics of our entire city and not disregard groups of our community as expendable. If there is no African-American representation on our council, we would have forgotten our city's image as a whole. Let us resemble a phoenix that moves mountains, builds bridges, and rises together in diversified unity, because that's what we need. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
What is your position on removing the city manager from office?
I will follow the consensus of the council and do what is best for our city and for our districts.
What is your position on South Central Light Rail project as well as the future of high-capacity transit in our city?
I believe we need the best solution for the federal dollars to come to our community and also so that the community benefits and is not gentrified, and that everyone can see growth and economic development. That is fair and just.
Thank you.
And no, I have not.
No, okay, got it.
You don't have to keep repeating.
I figured you'd do it by now.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Onissimus Straun? And then I'm going to ask this, Mark Gredal Blanca here? Okay, so you're here, okay. You'll follow him.
Just for the record, Mayor, thank you so much. Thank you, councilors, for having me here today. For the record, the pronunciation is Onissimus Strawn. No, that's okay. See, we'll be working together in the future, so.
Do you have a nickname?
Pops.
Much easier, thank you.
Much easier. Uh-oh. But I thank you for the opportunity to be here today, seeking appointment for District Eight and representing the great people of District Eight and the city of Phoenix. Thank you, community, for coming out. This is an important time, and I'm glad everyone responded. I am so grateful to see the call to action was met. There are tremendous candidates here, all of which are brown, some darker shades, I'm the darkest, so when you appoint me, there's no doubt that people will look at the council and say, it's all-inclusive and representative of the community at large. Okay? With that being said, I was born and raised in Ansel, Bahamas. And I was raised in a family of eight by a single mother, who believed hard work paid off and gave us family values centered on love, caring for each other, to look out for neighbors and community, and by giving back and sharing the little that we had. In my country, where there were no real social welfare programs, my mother went extra mile to ensure we had sufficient provisions and access to great education, great education, that's important, in anticipation that our future would be substantially greater than our starting life in our current situation. We embrace that, along with it she instilled strong principles of hard work paying off, stay out of trouble, love thy neighbor as thyself. So naturally, my life, past, present, and future, has been built on helping the underprivileged and underserved that reside in communities lacking resources, support, access to great education, medical services, jobs, transportation utilities, food, and children programs. I and my sibling pulled ourselves up by our bootstraps, took care of each other, worked hard, got a good education, and got jobs so we could help others along the way. We strove to be that shining example to other young boys and girls, so that they know their hard work, their focus, their dedication, and again, I go back to education, so vital. With that, too, they can achieve great things and successes in life, not only for themselves, but for the families and the communities for which they were born and tied to. As far as professional experience, when you look at my resume, you see, I started with the University of Arizona as an accountant, all the way through to Controller's Office, a business manager, and eventually at ASU as Assistant Director for the School of Earth and Space Exploration. So I have a strong understanding of numbers, budgets, strategic plans to budgets, implementing them, executing them, monitoring them for effectiveness, so that we use the city and the employees and the residents and all that to the well-being of the city. I'm here to offer that today as a candidate. And additionally, I had the great pleasure of working with DC Government as their Associate Director for Facilities Management, responsible for all the city in their district, all buildings and properties, parks, et cetera, programming events. And I realized I was successful in that by working towards the common goal of residents, whether environmental education, policing, crime prevention, fire, crisis, disaster response, especially in DC, health, seniors, youth. That made the difference and made us successful in those endeavors. I'm here to offer that to the city of Phoenix and resident District Eight. I pledge to bring a particular zeal, the same zeal that I have exhibited all through my life and career, the commitment to excellence, the quality of work standards, to address the concerns of the mixed and diverse residents and communities of District Eight and the city of Phoenix at large. District Eight is in a pivotal stage in development and growth, and is in need of a very astute, passionate, effective individual committed to the well-being of all of its residents. I am that person, and I would like nothing more than to serve on the city council, to represent and advance the needs, services, agenda, goals, and dreams of the family in that district and the city of Phoenix. Thank you for your time. I think I over-prepared, but it's best to be safe than sorry. And remember, the last shall be first. So point, Onissimus Strawn.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman?
What is your position on removing the city manager from office?
I pray that's a rhetorical question, because I believe in everyone being employed. I hate to see unemployment, and that going and contributing towards unemployment just really, really disturbed me. From a rhetorical standpoint, I believe as long as we execute a fair due process, investigate it properly and make the right decision, it's fine, right? Because we want someone in that position to be successful and capable and producing what it is that the council need for the council to do its job. As far as Ed himself, I met him probably once at Pilgrim Rest, when they came in with the police budget and the body cams and so forth, and he presented well. And I used a lot of his material to help understand the dynamics and the composition and the requirements and the budget and the future for Phoenix. So I applaud him for the work that he has over him, and I celebrate him for the work that he's done. But I have no problem participating in the process.
What is your position on South Central Light Rail project as well as the future of high-capacity transit?
I've been in Arizona for 30-some years, and it's always been a challenge to get around from city to city, location to location. I've been blessed to be able to afford cars throughout my life, so I haven't been relying on it, but I know a lot of people in family who can only get access to good jobs, who can only get access to good restaurants, entertainment, and a lot of what the city offers by using Light Rail. So I'm for it 100%. As far as the South Phoenix development part of it, I'd like to see it. It creates some concerns because of traffic and congestion, and I know it impact and could possibly put small businesses out of business. So the feasibility study has to be right. I watched what happened right there on Washington and Jefferson, and I've been blessed to know some good people that have been successful in this community. I look at individuals like Jackie Berry and his family, and I watch just the traffic and the foot traffic and people driving to support businesses just diminished to the point where some of them went out of business. So I truly encourage the council to take that into consideration. If at all possible, start introducing underground transit that won't disrupt the way of life on the surface. That addresses the mass transportation. I think we're now as a city, as a city at the place where we can afford to explore going underground for transportation as opposed to all these structures that's adding to emissions and adding to the heat index of Phoenix. So I'd like to be a part of that discussion and continue that work.
Okay, and the last one is, have you applied to be a precinct committeeman?
I thought about it, and that's why I had the pleasure of meeting you, because I would have been in your district. And I thought about it, and as I look at what the precinct person would be doing, I realize that I have been experienced enough, blessed enough, to live in various communities in the Bahamas, Texas, Tucson, Phoenix, and my gifts and talents could be better served in the forefront in a greater capacity like a city council for the people and the residents as opposed to helping other candidates get to that place. So I bypassed that process to seek things like this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't believe so.
Thank you so much. I look forward to working with you, and I look forward to your support. Vote me in. Appreciate you.
Um, esteemed Mayor Williams and council members, members of the community, um, good morning. My name is Margarito Blancas, and, uh, I was, uh, I came to Phoenix in the early eighties when my family decided to bring, um, my parents decided to bring my family, uh, from Mexico to Arizona. I, uh, grew up, um, in the district. I attended what was then called Hawkins Elementary School. Um, due to the expansion of the airport, the school had to move north to Thirty Street and, and Fillmore, and it was renamed Wilson Elementary School. Um, so I, I have lived in Phoenix for the majority of my life, um, and, uh, I really have seen the wonderful changes and the improvement in the development of the city. I attribute it really to the past leadership of the City Council and the current members of the City Council. Uh, one of the reasons I decided to get involved in the decision-making process is because of, uh, what I felt the need for the neighborhood that I live that is north of, of the airport. From, you know, from the need to repair our roads to, um, better housing and to looking for a proactive approach to revitalizing the East Van Buren Quarter door, uh, with, as well as helping small businesses thrive. Um, my, uh, community, community involvement, um, stems from my participation as, uh, when I attended elementary school, Wilson, and as I transitioned into Sky, into, uh, high school, I attended some of the, uh, meetings of the Sky Harbor Neighborhood Association. And there's where, that is where I learned where community got together, neighbors got together to address, uh, some of the pressing issues, um, that the community faced, from public safety to improved education and the importance of, um, really working in partnership with different stakeholders. So I graduated from Wilson Elementary School in eighty-nine. I went in, uh, went to Campbell Lake High School and graduated in nineteen ninety-three. I also attended several of the local community colleges before, um, obtaining my bachelor's degree from ASU in, in psychology in, uh, two thousand and eight. In, uh, two thousand and six, as a member of the community, I was amazed really by the large turnout of the migrant community that was opposing anti-immigrant laws at that time, that, uh, a year later, I make, made a commitment to, uh, really get more involved in, in the community and really the groups and organizations that were doing things to, to create change. Uh, and I decided to, to join, uh, what is called the East Almost America Coalition. It's a coalition of different, um, immigrant rights, civil rights organizations, as well as individuals, really advocating to, uh, help the migrant community really become part of the fabric of, of this great state. So, uh, really also other, it's not only that coalition, there are several different organizations that are doing this great work, as I mentioned, to, to help the migrant community become, uh, part of the fabric. Uh, I myself am really an example of what those organizations help out as I, uh, applied for, uh, citizenship in two thousand and six and finally obtained my, uh, my naturalized citizenship certificate. Um, in two thousand and fifteen, I reconnected with the Sky Harbor Neighborhood Association. Uh, and they, as they were looking for, um, leadership, young energetic leadership, uh, and they were also looking for somebody to continue the work of really providing for, for the neighbors in terms of continuing the, uh, after-school programs that the, the city along with the local, the local school are providing. So, uh, at that time also, I saw the fact that the lack of participation in, in, um, city government and, uh, particularly, uh, the, what was called the Reinvent Phoenix Project, and I minimal, I saw minimal attendance at the steering committees. So I realized that as a, as a conduit between the community and the, uh, and the decision-makers is really hard to keep the community engaged and those, um, in, uh, public office really accountable. I also just wanna make a side note in terms of really what I would be willing to do in, in, uh, in the City Council is not just be concerned with my area but more the issues that, that are pressing. Um, at times, uh, I, not necessarily what Michael Johnson went through, but in terms of law enforcement, I've been questioned and detained several times for a mistaken identity. But, uh, I'm just an individual resident, just here, um, really taking a stance on it. I hope I can be an example to others to really step up.
Much. Uh, Councilwoman?
Yes, what is your position on removing the City Manager from office?
Uh, Councilwoman Pastore, um, the only issue that, that I'm concerned that I feel feels under the direction of, of the City Manager is the local Phoenix Police Department and some, I met with a few groups really to address the issue of police accountability and safety, and in the past, it seems that, uh, the community wasn't being heard. So on that particular issue, if, if the leadership, uh, if the, uh, City Manager is not really listening to the community or the leadership of the council, uh, then I would believe that I would work to, to find somebody that would be willing to do that. But again, that is just one, one issue.
Thank you. Uh, what is your position on South Central Light Rail project as well as the future of high-capacity transit?
I, uh, in support of the expansion of the light rail, I, I've seen the, um, changes that came through. I live on, uh, just north of Washington, um, so I am in support of that, but at, at the same time, uh, we also have to be mindful of the communities to make sure that families are not displaced and, uh, small businesses are not displaced, also prioritizing public safety.
Thank you. Have you applied to be a precinct committeeman?
I am an appointed precinct committee person for the Monroe Precinct in the Legislative District twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, I wanna thank all the candidates that come down. District Eight is very fortunate and has some very talented, community-spirited candidates here today, and, uh, I also appreciate all of the supporters that came. If you filled out a card, I want those put on the record, anybody who has filled out a card to support. And, um, I, I believe we have, did you want to ask the question?
I just wanted to ask, uh, a question.
Don't have to.
No, I know, but I just want it on the record only because I asked everybody and I, it's just only fair.
Okay, Gilbert, we need you to come up one more time so she can ask the three questions.
And as you're walking, I'll ask them and you can have the answer. What is your position on removing the City Manager from office?
Yes, my, uh, position on that is it is not a priority of mine to remove the City Manager. I'm not gonna hire a specific staff person that has an extensive network of City Managers on hand. What I will say, though, is I have brought up concerns to you all about management, and if management issues can't be addressed, then if appointed, I would start to work my way up, and if that means removing the City Manager, then I would be willing to do that.
Okay. What is your position on South Central Light Rail project as well as the high-capacity transit?
Yeah, so the South Central Light Rail, honestly, I am going to look to your guys' counsel and the councilman from District Seven. The reason is, if he supports two lanes, then my job is easy. If he supports four lanes, then my job becomes hard because in my opinion, one thing that's not being talked about is the bridge at Central in the river bottom. I believe that that bridge would have to be significantly redone to have four lanes and a train. I think we've missed the opportunity on federal funding to help with that. So we would then have to look for either private investment through opportunity zones, uh, down there, or if, uh, Mr. Zirker can, uh, quickly print more money, um, for those, uh, for those repairs.
Thank you. Have you applied to be a precinct committeeman?
Um, no, I have not. I've been a registered voter, is having no party preference for almost six years now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item three, appointment of the interim council member. Vice Mayor?
Me, Mayor. I would like to move Felicita Mendoza, uh, get the appointment, and I'd like to make a statement. Thank you. I don't think we should appoint applicants who are going to run. I've said that, uh, several times before, going back years, and I'm gonna explain why. Uh, after today, I will have served with sixteen members, including myself, in my time on this council, which is only seven years, less actually. Uh, six of those were appointed initially, and two, myself and Tom Simplot, for those who remember him, uh, beat somebody who was appointed. So eight out of the sixteen times, somewhere along the way, somebody got appointed or somebody beat somebody who got appointed. Happens all the time. It's a crummy process, and I don't like it, and I'd like to change it. I'm gonna explain kinda what I have in mind there as well. Uh, but first, I wanna sort of fact-check myself, so if Elizabeth from the City Clerk's office, uh, or interim City Clerk, I should say, um, first, Felicita Mendoza would not be eligible to run for the seat, correct?
So Felicita has not filed to run in a special election?
The deadline was last Friday at five?
Exactly.
So she can't do it. There's no shenanigans that can be played. She won't be able to run. You guys are shaking your heads, no. Okay, I'm relying on you. Uh, thank you. So, uh, this I've already checked, but, but you guys are the source, so if I'm wrong, please let me know. Uh, anybody know who the last councilperson to win an election, so they didn't get appointed, they actually won an election, uh, went on to later lose an election? Anybody have any idea when the last time that happened was? Just to show how important incumbency is in city council races, if you actually won your election, not appointed. I see a lot of scratching your heads and so forth. I won't keep you in suspense. Our own Sal DeCiccio beat Kathy Dubs in nineteen ninety-three, twenty-five years ago. Twenty-five years since someone who won an election actually wound up losing somewhere along the line. So, um, incumbents who get elected always win. If we appoint somebody, I just gave you the statistic before, there's at least a three-quarters chance, if we appoint somebody, they're gonna win their election, and then it's Katy bar the door. Do you know what the term limit would be for somebody who won, who got appointed to this seat and then won? Because the city does not count, Brad, Elizabeth, check me if I'm wrong, they do not count partial terms. Kate Daigle got elected last August, so she hasn't even been theoretically in office a year. It's probably almost to the, actually, she got elected, so she didn't take office till January, so it hasn't even been a full year. So the term this person could conceivably fill if they won elections is every person who's won an election has since nineteen ninety-three, fifteen and a half years roughly. Do you know what that makes their term limit? When would they be termed out? Twenty thirty-three. Does that seem like a long time from now to anybody for the seven of us to be making this decision? I guess we'll all be long gone, I think.
Be careful how you say that.
But yeah, well, I don't mean it like that. I mean, off the council, sorry. Um, you're gonna outlast us all, Zelda, I'm not fooled. You can soft pedal it all you want, but it's not gonna work with me. Uh, this just speaks, I think, to why we shouldn't be appointing people. This is a long-term decision. For those who think this is maybe something, I don't know what you could really debate, these are facts. These are not my opinions. These are either legal facts or what has happened in history that is kind of irrefutable. So, uh, if you wanna debate me on it, fantastic, but I'm not sure how you would win that argument. For those who think, though, that maybe this is embellished, Mayor Stanton, I made this point last time, appointed in two thousand, still mayor in twenty eighteen, could've been mayor until twenty twenty. So we had, what, five-minute presentations today and one piece of paper from each candidate, a couple of packets with some pictures and stuff. Everybody comfortable making a decision that will be dramatically impacting city policy potentially in twenty thirty-three or beyond? Because if they won a mayor's race somewhere in there, uh, we could be talking like twenty forty. Fantastic. I'm not comfortable with that. Felicita Mendoza, uh, is vowed, is not able, eligible to run. You know what her term limit is? At the latest, I think it's May, again, City Clerk, check me if I'm wrong, she's term limited in May of next year. So fifteen and a half years versus like eight months. Now, I will confess, I don't know Felicita Mendoza that well. So some might say, "Why are you nominating her?" Well, I'm not that dogmatic. I'm not like, this is, this is someone who fits my criteria, so I'm really excited about this opportunity. But I will say this, I'm much more comfortable appointing someone for an eight-month period than potentially a fifteen-to-twenty-something-year period, 'cause that's just nuts. So, again, based on what, the information we have, 'cause I may not know her that well, but I don't know all the rest of these applicants well, some I don't know at all. But regardless, um, that just seems like a big decision, frankly, on behalf of voters, who, history shows, will reelect that person over and over until they decide to quit for, really, over a decade. So that's just something that I thought, um, you might wanna consider. Um, anybody who wants to vote against, uh, Felicita Mendoza because she is or has been a city employee, I agree with you completely. This is not ideal for me in any way, sense, shape, or form. Uh, but, but before any of my colleagues or anybody decides, "Oh, we can't be doing this," because it got alluded to, Jared Mopin mentioned that, uh, City Insider and so forth, I agree, she is. Let's look at the history of it. And this is not to criticize any current or former councilperson or any applicant in any way, shape, or form. So the last appointee a couple of weeks ago had, I think, the same job title or basically the same job title as Ms. Mendoza. So obviously, that's not a limiting criteria. The appointee before that is a longtime city employee, we all know and, and really respect and love, but there it is. Um, the fellow before that, public sector union leader, not exactly City Hall outsider. Uh, the one before that, former councilperson, been on the council before, we have one of those applicants today. Uh, the one in two thousand and three that Tom Simplot beat, I didn't know her, I think though, uh, uh, she's now, I think, sadly deceased, I think she was a staffer for the then-current mayor. This, this crew or its predecessors reaching out of the box to grab outsiders? No. So that is not in and of itself a reason to vote against Ms. Mendoza. Again, I'm not thrilled with it, but I inherited this office system. This, this wasn't my idea. We're here and we have to vote, and it is really awkward, I can tell you, 'cause I see friends in the audience who are voting, I've been lobbied by friends, it takes up an inordinate amount of time, which I'm happy to give, but it is a really awkward process. We're picking our own colleagues, and that's not how we should do this. Basically, um, I'm looking at the eight years, eight months, excuse me, versus the fifteen years. I do have a, a suggestion, I guess I'll say, um, uh, so people are like, "Well, she's an independent and maybe used to be a partisan." I understand that completely. Uh, for those who would say, "Jim, wouldn't you like a conservative Republican to join you on the council?" Absolutely. Absolutely. I'd love to put the most conservative person I could find on this council. But for those watching at home or you guys in the audience, last time I checked, even with two Democrats resigning to run for mayor, it's still a four-to-three Democrat versus Republican split, so I think my prospects there might be a little dim. And regardless, here's what happens when you play those kind of games. Uh, one appointment ago, be two after this vote here, uh, there was a Republican who got elected, resigned, uh, to run, uh, for something else, and when that happened, the Democrat council appointed Democrat to replace that person. So how many voters from that district had input in that process? Zero. None. You think that might be a surprise to some people who worked hard on elections and so forth? Yeah, probably was. Uh, I got to explain it to a few people who were like, "Wait, wait, wait, how did that happen?" Bad process, that's how that happened. So having an independent, uh, fill this spot makes a lot more sense. Again, I have great respect for all of my colleagues, uh, Democrat or Republican or independent. Um, I do think this process is flawed, it's no individual's fault, it's just the way it is. You can tell, I feel strongly about that. Um, I'm sorry to belabor it, I really probably could've just referred you to the really excellent Arizona Republic article, um, that, that summarized not just my views but this process as a whole. Uh, it is made all the more excellent by the fact that they actually used the word "bugaboo" in the article. So I was very excited about that. That was, uh, something on my bucket list that I finally can check off. I would propose a new policy for those who might be interested in this. Uh, obviously, myself acting alone, I'm not gonna go out and pay money for signatures and so forth to get something on the ballot, the same change the city charter, which I think is what would be necessary. But if anybody is interested, there has been some people, even people who are former councilpeople, have contacted me and said, "I'm really kind of interested in this." Um, so if anybody's interested and wants to weigh in, uh, here's the changes I would propose. Uh, if you're appointed, you can't run. Period. Uh, second, uh, you can't be a current or former staffer and get the appointment. You can run, uh, as law allows and so forth, um, but you can't be a current or former staffer and be appointed, which should address one of the issues that may come up today. Uh, and you have to be an independent, and you have to be an independent for a, a considerable period of time. I think the Independent Redistricting Commission, in order to get the spot where you're an appointee on that, uh, it has to be five years, I believe. I'm not wedded to five years, but, but some considerable period of time, uh, which would take you well outside the idea that you knew this was coming, uh, in advance. State law. State law, for example, if the Secretary of State were to resign, and they're a Republican or a U.S. Senator or something of that nature, and we've had several resignations, state treasurer recently, clerk of the court, you have to pick someone of the same party. So we could go down that road too. I think for our purposes, perhaps independent is better since they are, by definition, if this passed, not eligible to run. But, but that's it. I will stop talking now. That is the genesis of my remarks. I do believe Felicita can certainly do the job, has experience, understands it. For people who talk about hitting the ground running, I think that's definitely the case. But, but bottom line, this is someone who I think, you know, fills the criteria as I laid out and might give some thought to maybe we should be doing this a different way, because I don't know about you guys, but these last few weeks, it's, it's, it's really unpleasant to watch it, all the maneuvering and shenanigans, the behind-the-scenes, it's just extremely awkward, and I don't think this is serving voters very well. We should put this decision in the hands of voters rather than deciding ourselves what we want to see. We're the ones making the decisions, so by definition, that is what we're doing under this system. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate the time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor? Mayor, if I may, members of the council, so a quick review of one of the questions that Councilman Waring asked led to at least a potential issue. That is, that a person who's announced only for the appointment could theoretically mount a write-in campaign under our rules, so that would have to be ruled out, I suppose, if that was a...
A write-in campaign?
A write-in campaign?
That's, that's possible theoretically.
It is possible, yes.
Yes. To respond to that question, I apologize.
Can I ask, does anybody, does anybody know of a write-in candidate who's won an election in Arizona? Are you...
I heard Mickey Mouse. So has won several. Mickey Mouse has won several, according to...
Maybe we could have Ms. Mendoza come up?
Well, let's take a vote.
Okay, sure.
I have comments, so I don't know where, where I need to put my comments. I could do it at my vote, or where? I would like to make some comments to Councilman Waring. Councilman Waring, I think the last person that was not appointed and won was you, and I think before that was Tom Simplot. So I just want to put that on the record.
You misunderstood what I said.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I'm just putting things on the record, okay? Okay. Did you not run for office?
Please, please, just make your comment.
Okay, thank you. And also in listening, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, as you always do, in your new proposal and the word "shenanigans," I believe a employee would not be able to be part of your new proposal. Am I correct? This process, as many of you know, is a very difficult, fluid process. One day it's this way, and one day it's this way, and next day, then it lands. I think it's very interesting on how we changed our rules or the way we're going to go this way in an appointment, when two weeks ago, it was a totally different way of looking at it. And, and, and that puts many of us in awkward positions because of statements made have now shifted to where it shifted. It's a flawed process, I agree with it. It's a totally flawed process because there's pressure placed on us all different ways as to how to go forward and, and take the vote. I think it's kind of disingenuous also in order to meet certain categories in order for a colleague of mine to take a vote. That area, District Eight, if you look at the district and how diverse it is, it is very diverse in the sense of Democrats and progressives, and it's very diverse in color and ethnic background. I just feel or look at this process as who is the best candidate that will represent area within that area? In addition, who is not also an insider, maybe an outsider coming in and looking at things in a different light, knowing the impact of their community and what happens within their community? For me, this serious is a very serious vote because people are watching us. It's not you watching us, we're being watched nationally. We're being watched by the federal government, we're being watched by economic development and companies wanting to move here and seeing what is Phoenix? What does it look like? What is the diversity? How do they embrace diversity? And so I just don't take this vote lightly. So when I took the oath, because all of us have taken an oath, I took a psalm oath to support the Constitution and the laws of our nation and state, to bear the true faith and allegiance to them, to defend them all against all enemies, and to importantly discharge the duties of this office, and I take these duties of this office seriously. All of us sitting here will have, have taken the oath. I remind my colleagues and call upon them to remember this oath and to be true to it and to the people of District Eight. I'm not going to be involved in the shenanigans. Thank you.
Roll call. DeCecio?
Yes.
Ivara?
Mayor, may I please explain my vote? I know Ms. Mendoza, I respect her, but I committed to supporting somebody else before I knew she was interested in seeking the appointment, so I am a no at this time.
Noakowski?
Yes, Mayor.
Pastor?
No.
Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
We now have item four, which is calling for the spatial election to fill the vacancy in eight. I think you need to read the twenty-four-hour paragraph.
The title of the following ordinance number on the agenda was available to the public at least twenty-four hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance S. four-four-nine-zero-one.
We're voting? Roll call, go. I move it.
Do I have a second? I need a second.
I need a second. A second. Second.
DeCecio? We can, roll call. DeCecio?
Yes.
Ivara?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams? Yes. I believe that fulfills our agenda, is that correct? If the candidate wants sworn in, if she would like to come forward, we could do a swearing-in now, and I don't think she hears me. Otherwise, we are adjourned.